Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education for August 20th, 2018. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Mrs. Bradford. Oh, sorry, it's absent. Boy, that didn't start off very well, did it? We knew she wasn't going to be here. Mrs. Burton.
Here.
Okay. Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. And President Johnson.
Here.
Okay.
We have a call. Mrs. Jarvis, would you lead us in the fudge this evening?
I'd be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. That means that this is a voting meeting. And for those of you in the audience, if you want to follow along with our agenda, you can get one on the table outside of the door to my left. You can follow along with our agenda. From home, if you're watching, you can go to our website, lavoniapublicschools.org, highlight over the Board tab, and you'll see agendas and you can drop down and follow along with us. As I indicated, this is a regular meeting or a voting meeting. Because of that and because the items that are coming before the Board tonight have typically been discussed at length in at least two separate meetings, if you want to see in-depth discussion and questions regarding these issues, I invite you to go ahead and look at our website and watch our committee of the whole meeting from the prior meeting. So because this is a voting meeting, you won't hear the level of discussion that you normally hear. One of the things that this Board and the district has been working on over the past year or so is our district climate goal. Let me read what that says. It says, "All students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming environment where both students and adults respect and value one another." It's one thing this Board has been working on very hard, and I think we're well on our way, is that we respect each other. We may not always agree with each other, but when we don't, we have a good discussion on it and we respect each other's opinions. What better way to teach our students respect than respecting each other? And that is respect between student to student, parent to parent, or adult to adult, and adult to children. This Board values that. We respect anyone who comes in front of this Board to address us, and on the other hand, we expect that we are respected as well. So we'll get going this evening with our first item, which is communications. And we have our district update from our superintendent. Mrs. Oakley.
Thanks, President Johnson. Normally, my updates include a wide variety of celebrations and highlights from students and from schools. We are not yet all quite in session, but I do have a number of reminders that I think are important for families and for our students to know about, and I'd like to share those with you this evening. We do have one school back in session, Nijiro. Our Japanese immersion school opened last week for the new school year. They're open houses this week, and they are off to a great start. We have our bounce back to school event, which officially makes it feel like we are headed back to school. Our bounce back to school event is this Thursday, August 23rd. It is again at Riley Upper Elementary, but something new this year is there will be shuttles available running to and from the event from the Board Office. So if folks want to pack and park in the back of the Central Office complex at 5:00 in Farmington, we would be happy to shuttle you down, so you don't have to worry about parking at the site. Our fall sports activities are underway. Although school may not be in session, we already have many of our teams and activities underway, and certainly they are practicing hard, spending time at camp, and we thank all of our dedicated members of our marching bands and athletic teams and our coaches for getting us off to a great start. Recently, the Dialogue, which is our district newsletter, was published, and it includes a great deal of information about transportation, Parent Connect, lunch times, start and end times of school, the calendar for the year. If you did not receive that at home, we certainly have print copies here, but it is also available on the website and something you may want to bookmark to be able to go back to throughout the year. We have registration continuing for the new school year, so as you have families move into the district, please encourage them. We will continue registration for K through six students at Central Office until the second week in September, and for the secondary schools, that takes place at the school. Once again this year, we will have classroom assignments for elementary students available on Parent Connect. So a reminder, there is information both on our website and individual school websites. Kindergarten is the only grade level in which we mail out those classroom teacher assignments. All others, they will be posted on Parent Connect as of Wednesday, August 29th. Also, with regard to health care planning, other questions you may have are all of our offices are open as of today. So our secondary offices have been open throughout the summer. Our elementary school offices are back open today, so if your child has health and medical needs, please be sure to contact the school office so we can prepare for your child's well-being throughout the year. All of our instructional staff return next week. We start off with our professional development days and our teacher workdays. And although that is the official start, we know many of them have already been back in classrooms preparing for our students. And as usual, our operations and maintenance teams have truly done a remarkable job. We were out in a number of schools over the past few days. The floors are gleaming, and the classrooms are ready to go, and we are eager to get our students back. And with the exception of Nijiro, welcome all of our students and staff back for the first day of school on September 4th. Thank you, President Johnson.
Is there another item that you were going to?
Yes. I have one other item with regard to the agenda. Item number eight, Personnel Matters. We have item F, which is the appointment of the Riley Upper Elementary School Assistant Principal. Item F will be moved to the first item within personnel. So we will start with that as item A, and then all of the rest will follow in line. So again, under Personnel Items, item F will be the first item that we will cover under Personnel this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakley.
You're welcome.
That'll move us to item 3B, Written Communications. Are there any written communications? Seeing none, that will move us to item C, which is Audience Communication. Audience Communication is a time that the Board sets aside to listen to concerns from anyone in the school district. This is a time for the Board to listen. It's not a time to interact. The Board will not respond but save for perhaps corrections in factual information. Each speaker is afforded three minutes, and as I indicated at the beginning of the meeting, this Board will respect the speakers. We will not interrupt you. We would ask that you respect the three-minute time limit. Mrs. Bonnefield will have a timer that will go off at three minutes. We think that's a little nicer way to let you know that you are done, and at that point, we're going to ask you to wrap up your comments. If you are looking for a response from your communications, the Board has three goals and three roles. One is to hire and evaluate our superintendent. Two is to set policy for the district, and three is to make sure that we are aligned with our fiscal responsibility and our long-term strategic goals. If your matter concerns any one of those areas, then you can expect to get a response back from the Board. If your matter revolves around anything else and it requires a response, that will come from the administration. So I have two blue slips, and the first one I have is Tim Hall. Mr. Hall.
I'm here for the Infinity Homes sale, the Nankin Mills site. In the new letter received by Infinity Homes, the new plan is not to have the 57 people or 47 people remove their pieces of property, but to keep the fence where it is, act as if they've already removed their property, build the homes on there, and as the new homeowners take possession of their homes, then they get to fight with each individual homeowner as to the property line. So when the new homeowner takes possession, they get to have a litigation with the people on the fence line. This is insanity. This is crazy. And you guys wouldn't do stuff like this to your friends, your family members, your parents, or yourselves. You wouldn't have it. So why would you let this happen to us? It doesn't make any sense. Nobody in that community wants this. It really makes you wonder, you're voted by us, why aren't you working for us? Why are you helping Infinity so much? I mean, you guys are up to date on current events. You guys see what's going on with the councilman in Detroit that just received a bribe of just taking free drinks to help a businessman out, and what's going on with that. But I'm sure you're smarter than that. You wouldn't do anything like that. But then you wonder, why are you selling the price? Why is the price of the property so cheap? Why is it dirt-cheap for the property? And then when we tear down two schools here, we take the loss of that property. So essentially, you're giving it to Infinity Home for almost nothing. And then you look at it, and you go, well, what happened with the Detroit public principals that took bribes from the supply company and actually never supplied the kids with supplies? That was a little strange. But I'm sure you guys, again, are smarter than that. You would never do anything like that. And then you look at it, and you go, well, how is it that this Board here is tearing down more schools than any other Board in Livonia School history and selling all the parcels to developers when that's never happened before? And then you look at it, and you go, how are all these developers in the same family? Every single one of these developers is the same family. That's a little strange. And then you go, well, they saw what happened with Rizzo, you know, the trash titan that took the bribes, and you go, ah, that could never happen here. It's definitely just a coincidence that the same family is able to win all these particular possessions. So what you need to really do here is not sell it to Infinity. Say, "Sorry, sorry, Infinity. This place is not for sale. You know, we have a parcel over by Cooper that you're more than welcome to build your homes on." And then leave this as the green space that it was. For the people that are affected with the property lines that you darn-well know about, you tell them sorry. You gift them that particular property that's on their side of the property for the 30, or I'm sorry, 60 years of maintaining it and never receiving a dime from the school board. They cut the grass there. You guys never came over, cut the grass, but yet you're still saying that's your property. Well, they maybe should charge you for that. Now, also, what you need to do is flatten the land like you promised, plant trees there, put the place gate back up like you promised you would do when you initially tore down Nankin. And then after that, you apologize to everybody, and you use that particular parcel of property as a rotational school district. Basically, what you can do here is, since you tore down these properties, saying that these particular schools are a little pricey and you want to get rid of them, that you, when it comes time to tear down another school, you tear that one down and you put the new one here. But before you tear that one down, you build the new one here. That way, we have it. I'm sorry. I know. Thank you. Sorry.
Mary Lou Miranda, am I saying that correctly, ma'am?
Yes, you are.
Good evening.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns and concerns of my friends and neighbors over many years. We've lived on Merritt Drive for 45 years, and our fence line is, the school field was our backyard, and it was a wonderful place to live. We moved there. We lived there. We raised our children there. My grandson plays there. It's been a very wonderful time that we've spent there. The school field, this is what sold us on the house. This was the final thing we looked at many homes, but we had Westland, which had a little bit lower taxes than you did at the time, and it was the wonderful Livonia school system, which my children, and thank you again, I mean, I'm very appreciative of the fact that my children went, even though some of the, they went to Livonia schools for a period of time, the public school, they also went to private schools, and Livonia schools provided bus transportation to them. I mean, this is just, my daughter played in T-ball and all kinds of sports there. My son did too. We had get-togethers there, and we just enjoyed the property and the skill center and that beautiful green space. We, like I said, we lived there. We're, I'm very, very emotional because I'm hearing stories from my friends and family who our backyards, portions of our backyards are being taken away. People who've got beautiful trees that they've planted with their children back there and memories of their parents and grandparents. All this is going to be destroyed by Infinity Homes. It belongs to, supposedly will belong to them. I'm imploring you, I'm begging you, that to please feel that this proposed sale of the land, that it'll have a major negative environment impact on our environment. And please honor the promises that Mr. Lippa made years ago before Nankin Mills School, which, by the way, was donated. He made a promise to us in the meeting, to the community, the whole community, that whole subdivision, that we would have a green space there. And he brought illustrations, and he brought pictures, and this is what he said, "Livonia's public schools never, never sell their property. We repurpose it." And he also made promises that the green space for this property. Alas, this lovely promise has turned into a lie for profit, political, whatever, financial gain of people. That is just a crime to me. It's shameful. It's resulted in our backyards being taken away. We want the promise to be honored. We want the school board to realize how this is going to physically and emotionally affect the residents and their families and the whole environment. It's just such a huge load on it. Rosedale Schools, by the way, they had it, and they had it for, to be repurposed, to designate it for conservation and education purposes only. And that's what I think this school property is. I want to know who sold it to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miranda. All right. I don't have any other blue slips, so we will move on to item 3D, Response to Prior Audience Communication. Is there any response to prior audience communication? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approved the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of July 23rd, 2018. 5B, minutes of the organizational meeting of July 23rd, 2018. 5C, minutes of the closed session of July 23rd, 2018.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there any questions or comments on item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers, to accept the consent agenda. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Absolutely. Sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, I made the motion.
You made the motion. Yes, you did.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Holy cow. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us to item six, Instruction Matters. Item A is approval to purchase everyday mathematics student journals. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of everyday mathematics student journals for first through fifth grade classes and sixth grade at Webster for the 2018-19 school year from McGraw-Hill Education for a total cost of $117,704.89, which includes shipping and handling. This total cost includes $4,515.24 in free student journals.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Burton. And Mrs. O'Brien, you're going to help us with this.
I am.
Thank you.
President Johnson, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tonight, I'm bringing to you the annual request to purchase everyday mathematics student journals for the use in first through fifth grade classrooms and our sixth graders at Webster. These journals is the student textbook for everyday math. They do not have a hardcover student textbook. They do have a hardcover student resource book that's like a dictionary or an encyclopedia for mathematics, but this is the book that students use for their lesson and for their practice. We make a commitment every year to purchase the consumables to support our instruction in our classrooms, and this yearly expense has been budgeted in our elementary textbook account. So the total cost for the recommended purchase is for $117,704.89.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Any questions or comments from the Board?
No.
I just have one, and perhaps for the people that may be watching, you used the term "consumables." Can you just explain what that is?
Sure. A consumable is a workbook that is expected to be replaced each year. Students use it, do their work right in it, and then, you know, it can't be used again.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the approval to purchase everyday mathematics student journals. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Brings us to item 6B, Approval to Purchase Chromebooks and Carts 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education purchase 1,450 Chromebooks, 42 carts, and deploy services for the mobile devices from SEDIO for a total cost of $517,312.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. O'Brien.
Thank you again, President Johnson. Tonight, we are bringing a recommendation to purchase Chromebooks and charging carts using the 2013 bond for use in our middle and our high schools. Currently, our schools share carts across departments based on the size of the departments and the number of courses offered. We have been adopting new textbooks, and we are finding that some of our updated texts are providing features which teachers want to use on a daily basis in their classroom for instruction. It's no longer just a hard copy, a digital copy of the hard copy of the textbook, but rather, they are offering a variety of resources and experiences for our students in order for them to have a better learning experience. This recommendation is to purchase nine carts of Chromebooks for each high school, plus an additional charging cart for flexibility, and five carts of Chromebooks for each of our middle schools. It will be a total of 1,450 additional Chromebooks and 42 charging carts with a total of $517,312. And like I said, the funds have been included in the technology portion of our 2013 bond.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Questions or comments from the Board? Mrs. Bonnefield.
Mrs. O'Brien, could you just cover the extra carts? I thought that was just ingenious, and I think it's worth mentioning again.
Sure. So Chromebooks, needing students wanting to use them, we have Chromebook carts with 36 Chromebooks on a charging cart. And our classrooms are not at 36. We have classrooms anywhere from 29 to 30, in the early 30s. So we could, instead of having extra ones sit in a cart, we can take some of them and create another cart. That way, then, teachers, more teachers have that access to a cart closer by to share with their partners in their department.
Thank you. Makes our money go a little bit further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval to purchase Chromebooks and carts under the 2013 bond. And Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Brings us to item 6C, Approval to Purchase I-Ready Diagnostic and Instructional Licenses. I have a motion, please.
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation to purchase the online adaptive assessment program, I-Ready Diagnostic Assessments, for math and reading from curriculum associates for $90,720. I-Ready reading and math instruction for $14,400, and three days of professional development for $6,000. The total cost to purchase the diagnostic assessments, I-Ready reading instruction, and professional development is $111,120.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. O'Brien.
Thank you again. We are bringing the purchase of I-Ready Diagnostic. This is our third year using it throughout the district. We used it in mathematics the year before, and we're piloting it in our title buildings previously. All first through eighth grade students will be taking the I-Ready Diagnostic Assessment this year, three times a year, beginning in the mid and the end, and our kindergarteners two times a year in the winter and at the end of the year. This assessment provides teachers specific information about their student strengths and weaknesses with their grade level standards, and then it also provides our teachers with targeted lessons to support students' areas of weakness. In addition, I-Ready instructional licenses will be used with identified elementary and secondary students who would benefit from an online intervention. Some of the benefits of I-Ready is that it's online and adaptive, so it adjusts based on a student's answers. It's aligned with our M-Step and gives us some information about how they will do on the M-Step, and the results are immediate. So when students are done taking this diagnostic, teachers can look in and see their results immediately. So in summary, we're recommending the purchase of I-Ready reading and math diagnostics for all K through eight students, and diagnostic, instructional licenses for targeted students. We also have three days of professional development as a part of this I-Ready purchase. Our middle school teachers, this is new for them to give it to all students, the diagnostic, and so we want to make sure they are comfortable looking in and using the reports and following up with their students and using the lessons that come with it. Funds to purchase I-Ready is through our Economic Services Department budget, 31A At-Risk Grant and Early Literacy Assessment Grant. For the past two years, we've been able to write a grant to the State of Michigan, MDE, for grant funds to support online adaptive assessments, and we expect that window to be opening for the third year in the month of September, so we will apply for those grants to help pay for this also. The total cost for these purchases is $111,120.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Questions or comments? Mrs. Burton.
Should we receive the grant that the State of Michigan is offering for application? Approximately how much is that, and how much of that will this cover?
So it, each year, it depends. So you apply, it's through the Early Literacy Grant, and so you apply based on the number of students. You have K through three, but for the past two years, the State of Michigan funded the grant beyond what the number we put in. So we base our grant on the number of students we have, but we got more than that because they know that you are using it, K-six, for reading and math. So the state shares the funds based on how many people apply for the grant.
Okay. And I'm remembering correctly that this is the grant specifically that we, when we discussed it at our committee of the whole meeting, that we have to spend the dollars on the technology and then apply for the grant?
Correct.
Which sounds a little bit backwards, but that is the requirement that the State of Michigan is putting on us.
It is a reimbursement grant. You are correct. So I have to say that we've already purchased this and turned this in and then proved that this is, we've made that investment as a district, and then it's a reimbursement grant.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. O'Brien, could you just expand a little on what the 31A At-Risk state funds are for the benefit of anybody who might be watching?
Sure. So in, we receive two different types of At-Risk fund. We get federal funds through Title I, and that is based on our free and reduced number. And then we also, there's state At-Risk funds that comes under the 31A, and so each school district is given an amount of money based on the number of At-Risk students, and that's state funds. So we have the flexibility to use that on all of our students, At-Risk students in our district. We're Title I. We have specific schools where we use those funds.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers, to approve the purchase of I-Ready diagnostics and instructional licenses. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. That moves us to item 6D, Approval to Purchase Middle School Social Studies Textbooks. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District purchase the following textbooks. National Geographic World History, Great Civilizations, first edition, 2016, for seventh grade social studies from Cengage Learning, $109,083. And U.S. History, American Stories, beginnings to 1877 plus.
and U.S. History, American Stories, Beginnings to 1877+, National Geographic Explorer Visits, first edition, 2018, for eighth grade social studies from Cengage Learning, $101,705.50, for a total cost of $210,788.50.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Brad, Mrs. Bu, ooh, excuse me.
I just catch you.
That's easy for you to say. Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield, all those Bs.
I know.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Thank you.
I hope you can do it better than I did.
Oh, I don't know. So this evening, we would like to bring a recommendation to purchase middle school social studies textbooks. As you know, we have a requirement for textbook adoptions outlined in our board policy and our administrative procedures. The textbook committees consisted of 10 middle school teachers, three from Frost and Holmes, and four from Emerson. They spent time reviewing our current state grade level expectations, our proposed social studies standards, and the C-3 framework. The purpose of the C-3 framework is to provide state's guidance in the development of their state standards. Our recommended books this evening best met the evaluation criteria and coherently developed the concepts as deemed, as deemed as priorities by our committees during analysis. Our seventh grade committee recommends the adoption of National Geographic Learning's World History, Great Civilization. The eighth grade committee recommends the adoption of National Geographic Learning's U.S. History, American Stories, Beginnings to 1877. Both committees' teachers believe that National Geographic's learning will further support our inquiry arc suggested by the C-3 framework and incorporated in our proposed Michigan social studies standards. The resources provided by National Geographic Learning have superior visuals and videos, as well as support for our struggling learners through drop-level text. They also provide access to digital platforms that create greater access to the textbook and integration to our Google classrooms. Both textbooks were used in our classrooms, piloted, evaluated by students, and the recommended texts were approved by administrators. So in conclusion, we're recommending both the National Geographic Seventh Grade World History, Great Civilizations textbook, with the National Geographic license for seven years, the online license, for a total of $109,083, with an additional $9,547.50 in complimentary teacher resources, and the National Geographic Eighth Grade U.S. American History textbook, the National Geographic online license, with a cost total of $101,705.50, with $4,177.50 in complimentary teacher resources. This money has been budgeted in the secondary textbook budget and has been supported by funds through the Wayne County Enhancement Millage.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Frank?
I just wanted to say it's an exciting time to buy textbooks. It's a beautiful thing, and this board is honored to do that, to approve these textbooks. So thank you and the committee for all of their work, but this is an exciting time, and thank you to the voters who voted for the enhancement fund, or the enhancement fund.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Mrs. Burton?
Yes, when we discussed this at the committee, the whole, in the study session, you said that there were some IT issues that they were still working out, and we were not going to be placing our order until those had been rectified.
Correct, and I am placing that order today.
Okay, great.
So on Friday, they were testing it, and today we got word from them that they had tested it in their environment and sent Mrs. Finkel a link to test it herself, so we are ready to go for professional development next week. We are very happy that they fixed it.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Just to dovetail off of Mrs. Frank's, I don't think most of the people who watch or tune in really realize how much work goes into determining a new textbook, the amount of time, the research that goes into it. This team put an awful lot of work into this, as they do for every one of our textbook purchases, and this board is eternally grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield, for the approval to purchase middle school, high, middle school social studies textbooks. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. That moves us to item seven, our business matters. Seven A is approval of bid results for digital signage. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District authorize the purchase of digital signage from Digital Age Technologies, Inc., Davison, Michigan, in the amount of $77,636.36, plus contingency of $7,760, for a total authorized amount of $85,360.36.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Francis, you'll be helping us with this?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
The, this purchase is a planned purchase from the technology budget of the 2013 bond. The digital signs will give our school buildings the ability to, by simply hooking up a media player that comes with the, their televisions, even though they're calling them signs, or televisions that come with a media player, will give the buildings the capability to set up messages, information, whatever they may choose, via the Internet through a password-protected website, to display those for any folks that are coming into the building, or even in the high schools and middle schools and upper elementaries who will have more than one, even have them down the halls still for students, et cetera. These messages can be timed, they can be changed throughout the day, and they could even split the screen to have multiple messages on them. We're very excited by this, by this purchase, to have this type of flexibility for signage and capability in the buildings. And as an added alternate that was within this planned purchase is a purchase of additional media players so that all the buildings, K, 12, and pre, and post-secondary, the Garfield Skill Center, can also hook their media player up to the mobile cart television that they all have, and be able to put that anywhere in the building because it is a mobile cart, and have essentially a, another digital sign. So we do recommend this purchase from the 2013 bond.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I wanted to clarify that these are flat-screen digital displays for indoor use, not to be confused with outdoor digital signs.
Absolutely correct. It is a confusing name. We couldn't come up with anything better. But digital signs can be confusing, wondering if it's the scrolling board outside of some of our schools, like the high schools have, but these are flat screens on the interior. And one more piece that we discussed last week, there are two sizes, the 65 and the 49, depending upon the height and space that the school wants it displayed at.
Also?
Anything else?
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of bid results for digital signage. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. That takes us to item seven B, approval of bid results for demolition of Ford Skill Center. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District authorize the superintendent or her designee to prepare the contract between Livonia Public Schools and Salem Bean Trucking and Excavating Dundee, Michigan, to demolish the building commonly known as the Ford Skill Center. Eight thousand seventy-five Ritz, Westland, Michigan, in the amount of 550,000, plus contingency of 66,000, for a total authorized amount of $616,000.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Francis, you going to help us with this as well?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Based on the agreement to purchase real estate, which Livonia Public Schools has entered into with Infinity Homes, the district is obliged to demolish the Ford Skill Center by November 2018 in order to close the sale. To that end, the district put out a request for proposals for this project. We bring to you tonight a recommendation of Salem Bean Trucking and Excavating. While Salem Bean's bid was $6,436 higher than the lowest dollar amount bid on the job, we are recommending Salem Bean as the low responsible bidder, despite the approximate 1% increase up, upfront to the district. We do so based upon their past performance doing similar work for the district. The reasoning behind this recommendation is as follows. Salem Bean has successfully completed the last two building demolitions in the district, which are McKinley and Clay. In both projects, the district was pleased with the results. Their asbestos abatement company had also performed the abatement at McKinley and Clay, and the district was pleased with their work and results. The district experienced difficulty and issues with the performance by contractors in the two building demolition projects, using two different contractors prior to Salem Bean completing the most recent projects at McKinley and Clay. Therefore, the reliance on prior experience and past performance weighed heavily into the recommendation we are making this evening. Local residents at McKinley and Clay did not share with us any concerns regarding the demolition process. The district's expectation for the Ford Skill demolition would be for the neighbors to have an equally problem-free experience. Salem Bean completed their work within our budget and within the timeframe identified for the projects. In fact, they were able to expedite the project at Clay at the district's request. There has been a good working relationship between the company and the district during the previous demolition projects. While the base bid is $6,436 higher, the board, according to administrative procedures, quote, "reserves the right to accept the bid which appears to be in the best interest of the district," end quote. To that end, our recommendation is believed to be in the best interest of the district because we'll be working with a company known to have completed good work in a timely manner over multiple projects in LPS. Based on these factors, we recommend Salem Bean Trucking and Excavation to you for approval of the demolition of the Ford Skill Center project.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burton?
The one comment I have is why we are engaging in such work to begin with. As a reminder, we went out to our community within the last year or two, again, as we periodically do, and garnered feedback from the community in terms of what should be our priorities in these days that we still are experiencing what we believe to be inadequate funding for public education. Without a doubt, among the highest priorities of the community was to sell some of our excess property only if we are, well, only if we are as certain as we can reasonably be that it is not needed for current or future educational purposes in Livonia Public Schools. Many, many of our properties were purchased and built on in the 1960s when families were having far more children than they're having now, and the reality is that we have far fewer kids who attend school everywhere in the state of Michigan. This is not a Livonia unique situation. Therefore, we are doing what the members of this board believe to be fiscally responsible in carefully selecting a few pieces of our property that we do not believe will be used either now or in the foreseeable future for educational purposes, and utilizing those funds instead for the education of our students entrusted to our care. Based on that feedback from our community and the diligent work of our administration, I'm in support of this motion before us this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I would just like to commend the administration for their due diligence in recognizing that not all valuable assets of a corporation necessarily have a dollar sign attached to them. It was a very fair price that was quoted, and you had some very reasonable other assets to consider when we made this decision, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Any other questions or comments? I might also point out that it's been over two years ago now that we engaged Plantmer and Cressa to do a building utilization study for us, and some of our decisions have been based on the information that they provided to us. It was a long process, it was a very in-depth process, that many of these board members attended many of those community meetings with the information that was presented to us. So that also forms the basis of our decisions on what we do and what we don't do with many of our, our school sites or other properties that we have. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bon, Mrs. Bonnefield, for the approval of bid results for demolition of Ford Skill Center. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Brings us to item seven C, approval of bid results for Stevenson High School Practice Field Project. I have a motion, please.
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District authorize the superintendent or her designee to prepare the contract between Livonia Public Schools and the S and D Field Services, Westland, Michigan, to complete the renovation work at the Stevenson Practice Field in the amount of $49,322, plus contingency of $5,000, for a total authorized amount of $54,322.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mr. Francis, you will help us with this?
This is a sinking fund project, and we are planning to renovate this fall, a parcel at Stevenson High School located between the baseball field and the football field. The plan is to renovate that area of the field to improve the drainage, to place in-ground irrigation, and to top dress, overseed, and get it to be to a level that it becomes an area that is a practice field facility added into the rotation over at Stevenson High School. One of the reasons that we're working on Stevenson High School at this time is, as the board has recently approved, and as everyone knows, we are adding lacrosse in the district, and the unified team will be housed at Stevenson High School. So we're trying to help alleviate some of their crowding at the practice facilities at Stevenson. Once again, it's a sinking fund project, and our timetable is to complete this in this fall.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Jarvis?
I would just like to make sure that this field is a general-purpose field, not necessarily a lacrosse field.
Correct. It's actually going to be 120 by 60 yards, and it could accommodate multiple events. That would be a building decision. The athletic department can choose with regard to the rotational schedule, however they do that organizationally at Stevenson, but this could be used for practice of football, soccer, lacrosse, marching band, several different activities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
As a follow-up to Mrs. Jarvis's question, also, I understand that we are putting it at Stevenson first because lacrosse is going there, and if this is successful, I understand correctly that the next plan is to put a similar field at Franklin and Churchill also. Is that correct?
Correct. We will begin looking at that. That wouldn't be done this, this fall, but after this is successfully implemented, my department will start looking at potential spots at Franklin, which is already probably designated quite easily as the old McKinley area, and will have to find a place at Churchill for future renovation of the, an area so they can have an extra practice field.
Okay, great. And this is going to begin this fall, pending board approval and weather conditions and so forth, but it still will not be able to be used until at least this spring. Is that correct?
At, at very best, depending on how things take.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other questions or comments? Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Francis, and I had a conversation about this, but I just wanted the public to be aware, too, that our, our staff is employed all year round, so they will be taking care of the watering of the fields and that sort of thing during the summer, that there is somebody at the schools that will be taking care of that thing, of those sort of things, making sure that it's not overwatering or underwatering. So there will be somebody who is, who is working diligently on this, so it's not going to be left for the summer when other people leave the building, correct?
Correct, correct. The, the building supervisors actually work in the buildings during the summer, along with other maintenance groups coming in and out. Frankly, one of the concerns that, in conversations with, with the ADs, when they have an area that they're trying to water, they don't have in-ground irrigation. It's very difficult to manage it. They try, and they use different means and methods that just aren't as efficient as in-ground irrigation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, to approve the bid results for Stevenson High School Practice Field Project. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That'll take us to item seven D, approval of 2018-19 lease renewals for Garfield Cooperative Preschool, Himawari Preschool, Life Church, Learning Tree, and Livonia Little Tots. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve lease renewal agreements with Garfield Cooperative Preschool, Himawari Preschool, Life Church, Learning Tree, and Livonia Little Tots, effective July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019, for a combined annual total amount of $473,551.
Support.
We have a motion- We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Francis, you're up again.
I am, and I will try to make this the final one for you this evening. These are all lease renewals for the eighteen, nineteen school year. None of these are new proposed leases. Again, they are renewals with an annual increase based upon the CPI, as we regularly do. As mentioned, we did have one lease that was a little bit different because that was a preordained, two-year increase to get them back up to a rate that is commensurate with other renters and lessors in the district. So these are covering Buildings Marshall, Nigiero, Riley, and Cass, and I recommend to the board these lease renewals.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
You're welcome.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to approve the lease renewals for Garfield Cooperative Preschool, Himawari Preschool, Life Church, Learning Tree, and Livonia Little Tots. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. You almost said Burton.
I came really close.
Motion carries. That will take us to item eight, and as Mrs. Oakworth indicated, we are going to take item eight F first. So may I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Sherry Mazzoni as upper elementary assistant principal at Riley Upper Elementary School, beginning August twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Oakworth, or is this going to be Mr. Archibald?
Mr. Archibald is going to kick us off, and I will bring it home.
As long as he's not kicking us out, we'll do just fine.
I will not do that, or at least until you're done with this important piece of business. First, I want to thank Mrs. Scott, who led the interview process through the first two rounds, as well as the other members of Cabinet and building administrators who were involved in a very intense screening and interviewing throughout this process, and by our counsel done a wonderful job. Mrs. Mazzoni rose to the top of what was a very strong pool of candidates. She is currently, at least until tonight, assistant principal slash dean at Fulmer Scholars Charter Academy. She is responsible for the oversight of grades five through eight. She has ten years of administrative experience, in addition to ten years of experience as an elementary classroom teacher. Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education from Adrian College, Masters of Arts in Teaching in the Elementary School from Western Michigan University. Now, if that doesn't tell you how strong a candidate she is with an assistant superintendent and superintendent who are chipmunks, we're not going to be able to look past that much of thought. Mrs. Mazzoni, it's undoubted when you speak with her, as well as when you listen to the people we spoke with, as references, being very energetic, enthusiastic, strong work ethic. Teachers and administrators look to her as a mentor, as a coach. Staff, students, and parents adore her. She is well-read, consummate professional and educator. More than one person said others aspire to be her. So we feel delighted to be having her join our district and our staff. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Oakworth for your additional comments.
Thank you. We are thrilled to bring Mrs. Mazzoni to this evening as a recommendation. As you know, we hold in the highest esteem the leaders within our school district. They are the ones that truly bring to life the work within a school alongside the teachers, our building supervisors, our secretaries, our support personnel. And we ask a lot of our leaders, and in turn, they give so much to us. And certainly, with each person that we spoke with with regard to Mrs. Mazzoni and our time with her as well, and our team's time with her, have found her to be an exceptionally dedicated leader, very service-oriented, very in tune with the needs of the students she serves, her colleagues. She has been asked to serve as a mentor to other new leaders coming into their organization, and certainly exhibits a positivity that really anything is possible. Again, tremendous work ethic, great energy and enthusiasm for this important work that we do and that we ask our leaders to do. We could not be more thrilled that she is eager to come to Livonia Public Schools. We know we are not only getting a great leader, but a great individual. We couldn't recommend her, give you a higher recommendation for this position.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakworth.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the board?
No.
Yeah.
Well, all right. So we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield, for the appointment of our upper elementary school assistant principal. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. Congratulations.
As Mrs. Mazzoni makes her way up to the podium, I'd like to acknowledge Mrs. Kristin Cousineau, who is here this evening to welcome her newest colleague. Mrs. Cousineau also does an outstanding job for us at Riley Upper Elementary. We're thrilled to have this dynamic duo put together to lead the Riley School community. I'd also like to thank Mr. Kevin Etu, who is co-president of our exceptional leads organization here this evening to welcome his newest administrative colleague as well. Mrs. Mazzoni?
I just want to thank you. I'm extremely excited for this opportunity, obviously, and able to serve the community that I live in as well, so I can't wait to get started.
Oh, thank you. Sounds good.
All righty. We will move on then to item eight, A, teachers for approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Hold on just one second. Thank you. Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment to the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year to the teachers listed on the attached document. I was so excited about Mrs. Mazzoni, I lost my page.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. And is this going to be Mr. Archibald?
Yes, it is. These teachers have been interviewed, along with many other applicants, for vacancies that existed in our instructional program. We believe that the individuals listed are the most qualified for the position indicated. We recommend that they be approved for employment. These positions are within the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? You're welcome.
Yes.
Very much. We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers, for the approval of teachers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries.
May I make a quick comment?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. We are really excited to, I think we've shared with you a number of times, to bring forward the folks that we are bringing to you this evening, as well as those we have already brought forth this summer. We are thrilled with our newest batch of educators who will be joining us. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. McDonald and members of our cabinet team who have led the process for these interviews, along with building principals and assistant principals and coordinators who have come in throughout the summer to get these interviews done so we could get the very best, the very brightest, and those who are as eager to come to Livonia Public Schools as we are to have them join us. So I just wanted to acknowledge our team and the efforts of our many, many school leaders who have come in to be part of this process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakworth. We appreciate that. That'll take us to item eight, B, teachers for tenure. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and acknowledge that tenure status has been granted to the following teachers, effective on their respective dates. Maureen Bordage, August fifteen, two thousand eighteen. Victoria Haber, August twenty-six, two thousand eighteen. Nicole Miller, August thirty, two thousand eighteen.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Archibald?
Yes, thank you again. The teachers named have successfully met the requirements for a probationary teacher to be granted tenure, including years of service and job performance, as indicated through the annual evaluation process. We are asking that the Board of Education acknowledge that these individuals have achieved tenure status.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Any questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations to these folks also.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers, to grant tenure status to the teachers identified. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. That brings us to item eight, C, leaves of absence. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the requests for leaves of absence as listed below. Tracy Hammeran? Hammeran? Thank you. Jennifer Noel Allen and Marlene Scott. Effective date for each are is the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Archibald?
Yes, thank you again. These requests for leave are in accordance with the LEA collective bargaining agreement. As such, we are requesting the leave to be approved as requested for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen changes.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to approve the leaves of absence. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. The motion carries. It takes us to item eight, D, resignations. This does not require a motion. It is for board information only. So we'll move on to item eight, E, retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution of appreciation for the services rendered by Barbara Ewing.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Burton. Mr. Archibald?
Yes, tonight we bring before you the name of just a single employee who will be retiring. Mrs. Ewing, a master of experience of thirty-point-five years, transportation as both a driver and dispatcher. And on behalf of the district, I'd like to thank Mrs. Ewing for the years of dedicated service to the students of Livonia Public Schools, and ask the board to have the attached resolution in her honor.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Barb.
All right. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Burton, to accept the resolution of appreciation for the employee who is retiring. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. We have already addressed item E, so we're going to move on to, I'm sorry, item F. We're going to move on to item nine, hearing from board members. Item A is approval for board members to attend M A S B Annual Leadership Conference and to take M A S B classes. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve that board trustees attend the November two thousand eighteen M A S B, Michigan Association of School Boards Annual Leadership Conference in Grand Rapids, take classes and stay overnight as shown below for a total cost of two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
We have a motion?
We need to read the rest of the motion.
Oh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Keep going.
Yes.
Okay. Tammy Bonnefield, conference November second and third, and CBA class for four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Karen Bradford, conference on November second and third, and CBA classes, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Colleen Burton, delegate assembly November first, conference November second, and CBA class, two hundred and seventy dollars. Liz Jarvis, conference November third, CBA, two CBA classes, for five hundred and nineteen dollars. Mark Johnson, delegate assembly November first, conference November second, CBA class, two hundred and seventy dollars. Hotel cost, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Oakworth?
Thank you, President Johnson. As our board knows, per board policy, B B B C, these expenditures require advanced board approval. We are thrilled to see such a significant list of attendees at the annual M A S B conference for this upcoming November. As you know, and hopefully as our community knows, because we have proudly shared it